I'm glad to be here.
To the United States of America and India Republic for which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody on line in person. Well, John, thank you for putting the all in order.
Yeah, I was playing around the new seven.
Ready?
All right.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Second.
Any comments, questions, changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the March twenty third meeting. Second.
Question done. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Yeah, hi.
Everybody.
This is your sister about three hours ago.
So this week is the coming up this Friday is going to be the end of thirty weeks, which means we're going to be in our final ten weeks of junior year. Come support the class of two thousand twenty six at the fundraiser at U Huts and Leonard's Eatery tomorrow night from four to eight P M. A portion of all the orders that are mentioned for the class of twenty twenty six will be donated for the sophomore class. All the patrons have to do is just mention their for the class of twenty twenty six. For grades three to twelve, we will have a motivational assembly planned for tomorrow, Wednesday, April tenth. Our presenter is Keith Davis, a former NFL player who will help remind students about the power of our choices and listening to the right voices. His overall message is about perseverance and our ability to make our path a successful one regardless of our background. He will help us reinforce our gold blue initiatives. There will be more of a more formal presentation regarding this speaker in the near future. The N H S met before break to vote on which organization would receive a donation from our fundraiser that they held in February. The Red Cross will receive the donation. Members also created a spring created spring greeting cards for the military stationed overseas and the residents of Morgan Estates. The N H and J H S sponsored and ran with N H S the Red Cross Drive donation drive in March. And J H S is gearing up for the induction ceremony as well as N H S announcers. Um, that will be held in the auditorium on April sixteenth at six P M. The board members are welcome to attend. On Monday, March twenty fifth, our reigning middle school pace Shiner Regional Champions again took the stage to compete in the sectional final competition. Even though the difficulty level of the competition questions increased and all the competitors were there to win. Geneseo's team pulled ahead and won the sectional title by three points. The trophy from this competition and plaque from their winning their section are proudly displayed in the G C S library. Congratulations patrons. This week will also be um Invictor, the Nissma Solifast for Voice will be held in Victor High School. And that includes area all state solo auditions. Those will be Friday afternoon and Saturday morning. And spring sports of all levels are in full swing, kind of pun intended as there are some, well, and baseball games happening right now. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Enjoy the water.
Scott, I'll run the floor. Thank you. Gee, great virtual and otherwise. Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And uh this is a presentation of our second kind of preliminary budget. Looking to get together on the twenty second for kind of board approval. And then again, on May twenty first, there's going to be on May fourteenth, a public session and then on the twenty first for uh voter approval. So again, here we are, April ninth, today is going to be the second preliminary budget. Twenty second, I will not be present. Um, my wife and children are on a different break and so. I will be uh off on vacation. If you need me, I can definitely zoom in. We can do that. Uh, but I will not be here. Cindy will take over and then on the fourteenth, I'll be here to present a public vote uh presentation and then the twenty first obviously here for the final vote for photo approval. Again, goal number one, making sure we have high quality programming for our students that are going to go into college career or the military. Number two, making sure that we support staff or supports for our staff, students. Goal number three, consistent, high quality, transparent communication. Then goal four is me making sure that I can incorporate all three of those into a very rigorous academic uh program. So here's our current climate. So uh as some of you may or may not know, we're kind of assembling the plane in midair right now. Uh, the governor has asked for an extension. We have not been able to get a state adopted budget. So there is a lot of rumors that are kind of swirling out there about the potentiality of some more money. But right now we have to go off of what our current um uh projections are, and that's twenty five million four forty seven, three thirty eight. Okay, so looking at this, uh we really have trimmed um. The the current uh budget to meet our number. We have met that. We are at our number. Uh, we feel confident in that. It was challenging. I give all the credit to our administrative staff and Cindy for really um having transparent. Uh conversations. Uh, they had the good uh of the order that was there. And uh I can't um, you know, just say thank you and kudos to them for really kind of tightening it down, uh tightening the valves and making sure that. Uh, we are going to have the same, if not better, the equivalent of our programming for our students at Geneseo. So we want to make sure that we budget appropriately. And so we knew that this year, and I'll go through some of these slides that were utilizing appropriate and unappropriate fund balance. It's less than the fund balance that we utilized last year, so three hundred thousand and three hundred thousand. We are budgeting appropriately. Uh, if everything goes well, obviously, there could be some things that occur, but to uh budget that back and replace those funds. Uh, again, equivalent programming to the previous years. And we also I also want to make our improvement to our facilities as well. I keep talking about doors. More than likely re um imaging and um transplanting some of our doors is something that for the capital lot play project that will go out to the waters. Utilizing that hundred thousand dollars to replace some of those outside doors as well as the boiler. Um, we have found that unfortunately, um while we could do an emergency project, we would get the aid on that over fifteen years and that next year. And so that is something that we really do have to look at. We do have some fund downs for this year uh that we could set aside to incorporate that. But that is something uh that is in desperate need of repair. Um, of the three, one is completely out. The second one is kind of in um uh burn light failure, Mr. Davis says. So we currently only have one. Hopefully, the weather changes, but there is a four to six month kind of leeway in terms of having that arrive. So we're hoping that that occurs, getting that ordered and on the books so that we'll be all set for the fall of next year. So here's kind of our starting point. Okay, so you can see uh uh everything on this side and then our grand total. So grand total again gets us to twenty five million four forty seven, three thirty eight. Property taxes and another slide that I'll talk about that we are one of two districts where our property taxes are half of our actual budget. Okay, one of two of the twenty two districts in G V B O Cs. You have all your state foundation aids. Currently this year, we're going to get about an approximation of two hundred and ten extra thousand dollars. You have software, specialized high cost aid, Medicare, some other revenue. And then you can see our appropriate and unappropriate reserves that we utilize three hundred thousand for this year. Any questions in regards to kind of how we got there? And again, pilot for some that may not know, payment and little taxes, uh rock salt. Um. There's two or three other ones that are currently on that, and that's about six hundred and two thousand dollars. So here's kind of our revenue chart compared to the previous years. So blue twenty two, twenty three, the orange is going to be um this current or proposed next school year. So you can kind of see in the property taxes because we're looking at going out at the actual tax cap, three point eight percent. It's going to be a little bit higher, about four hundred sixty one thousand dollars more. You have other um payments right here. Those are the same. You have some aid, the high cost aid, that's going up a little bit. You have other aid that is just increasing, and then you can see some of the other ones over there that are actually decreasing from the previous school year. Here's kind of our revenue uh year to year. So again, you can kind of see our twenty five, four, four, seven, three, thirty eight. To last year and then the year on year changes. Okay. So in some of these, again, the appropriated fund downs, we're actually decreasing that use. Last year was around the three eighties. We're only going to three hundred thousand this year. I'm just going to go over here so you can kind of see. And here you see the percentage change. So a few minor percentage for tax gap eighteen point three. That's going to be textbook and software. That's just because we purchased it and our aid actually is increasing. It's going to sixty one, three, sixty one. Um nineteen point seven, ninety seven thousand dollars specialized high cost. We do have some individuals that are going out now um to different placements that is increasing that. So we do get extra funds for that. Other revenue, this, when I talked to Tom Zuber in um our auditor, really wasn't a clear delineation as to what this. What this number is and how we got it. Uh, but that was part of the of the twenty four, two, two, three, two thirty seven of the previous school year. Um, and so he's still looking into this, but I haven't got an actual number as to what that refers to. All in all, total increase is five point one percent.
That have been the ARP funds?
No, that that wouldn't be ARP funds. I'm assuming it had to deal with the emergency projects that were completed and aid back on that. That's my guess. That's what he thinks as well, but he has not really kind of dug into that and come up with anything substantial as of yet. So our preliminary budget, again, we met with each individual component uh of an administrative team and really sat down and talked to them in regards to. What are essentials, what are needs, what are wants? Um, again, the entire appropriate budget, you know, came in at like twenty eight million dollars in, you know, pie in the sky. Things were great. Ideally, those would be all the things that we would want to have. So in general, with the some of those appropriations, we were about three million dollars over. We were able to get it down to our number of twenty five, four, forty seven. Uh, current comparative comparative data to last year uh with actual B O Cs costs. It's it's kind of funny, you know, uh Mike, you've you've asked great questions in regards to B O Cs and why are we not budgeting appropriately? And uh I believe we we finally found kind of the culprit. Um, so looking at what's called the A S seven, that's something that B O Cs sends us. They come, they sit down, they have a meeting with, you know, usually um central office in November. We had that. Here's what your current services are. What would you like to have next year? We sign off on that. Cindy signs off on that. I was not a part of that. So we have all that in March. It's kind of like, hey, I need this sign. Look it over. Make sure everything is where you want. It's not accurate. There are many discrepancies and I I feel and I don't want to speak out of church, but I feel as though that could have been where some of the budgeting mishaps. Uh, and mishaps is the wrong word where they're just judging of what they saw, thinking that was the the finality of what the budget was going to be. It wasn't accurate. There are other budgets um components that were not on the A S seven. And so again, for another time, Cindy has kind of that um. Data to showcase in November what was there to March, and they do not align, and it's a huge gap.
Okay, so I'll be in tomorrow. Let's take a look at it.
Uh, looking at outcomes of budget adjustments, I I think here is really determining the potential revenue. So. Um, again, rumors swirling, potential three percent on the levy. If that's in addition to what we currently have of the two ten, three million or excuse me, three percent on twelve million is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in additional revenue that we would receive. Okay, we're also a targeted school that Cindy has alluded to as well. Um, with those funds, I have no idea what they will look like, asking around, seeing some um other districts that are currently in that that are targeted school districts. They're getting two hundred, around two hundred thousand dollars. Again, while we can't necessarily utilize that as revenue, we could then build some resources to support our needs. So that would be huge for us to be able to have that. And then again, we'll meet again from the administrative team who were fantastic, really kind of solidifying where we need to be more efficient. And what some of those trims and those reductions are, and that that will be the identification process. So here again is the tax levy. Again, I know I said that I was going to kind of be a uh repetitive. Maybe it's something that you guys have seen this slide a tremendous amount, but currently, right now, you know, we were able to get down to our budget of twenty five million four forty seven, three thirty eight. And that is here. And so uh what we have done is um potentially going out at our tax cap, which I think is critical. And again, I'll state this, if we don't do that, that would be the another about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we would have to trim and reduce to our current budget. So right now, last year, budget, your your tax cap was four point two. We went out at one point nine. This year, we're at three point eight and we're asking to go out at three point eight. The difference is about four hundred sixty one thousand dollars that we would have an additional revenue. What you get from your tax gap, where the proof is in the pudding, is your two percent. The two percent is programming, right? It's staff, it's people, it's what bring us every single day to educate our students. Uh, the other one point eight is going to be some miscellaneous, but a lot of that is the project and the capital improvement project that you did in twenty twenty one. That you guys said would go out to the voters. They are paying for that. And that's really where this three point eight percent comes from. Here's star next year, what that will look like on a hundred fifty thousand dollar house. Previously, it was um, I think thirteen eighty four. It's now going to go up to fourteen thirty five, which is an increase of about sixty one dollars throughout the year. Divide that by twelve, we're looking at potentially five dollars a month on a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Here's our proposed budget versus the twenty four, twenty three, twenty four. So you can kind of see uh general support, instruction, you know, when you think about. Our our budget, you think about instruction, it's staff, right? They're they're the crux of, you know, teaching our students. Instruction and you look at employee benefits, that's about seventeen to eighteen million dollars, which it should be of our current budget of twenty five million. You throw in transportation, which is about one point three or four, some other miscellaneous inflation cafeteria costs. This is how we get to our number right here. This is where it was before. Our difference, again, it's five percent. Here's the breakdown again of um the proposed budget. Little bit more, our debt service, again, that is increasing because of our project. Transportation is going up. Interfund transfers should be going down. We will not be doing the two hundred and fifty. I always get these mixed up capital.
The capital project.
There you go. Here's the difference in a chart that will kind of showcase that. Again, blue last year, orange is this year. So instruction again is going up. Employee benefits going down just a little bit. Transportation is going up. There was a lot of fuel. Um, and it's more fuel costs in. I know the previous year we had a ton of stack students. Um, so again, that's kind of like the year to year comparison. In one time, throw okay, thoroughly fried out there. This is all randomized. So these tax levy percent increases. Um, you know, I'm sure you guys have read the local papers and, you know, Geneseo has not been the only one that has been hit with some really hard budget. But like a budget season, you know, there are local districts around that are sadly losing a tremendous amount of staff. We really have kind of curtailed that and not not done that. Which is why, again, I think it's imperative that we utilize the three point eight three, but this is super random. It's not anyone. There's only one district that is staying at the uh no, no additional cap tax cap at the levy. They must have a ton of reserves and that that individual district is one night in the whole. So to be able to do that and pull that up and I have any tax levy cap, kudos to them. But everywhere else, you look at this, right around two, 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 on an average, some over threes as well. And I I stated this previously in the presentation, two districts out of the twenty two that have half their levy that accounts for their um. Total Fund, Lebonia, Geneseo. Everyone else is below forty percent, maybe one or two above forty. Here's our reserves. Again, you guys have seen this slide before. This is to make sure that we don't get into deficit spending. We're taking out six hundred thousand dollars, three inappropriate, three and unappropriated. We have enough budgeted this year to make sure that we put that back so that we stay flat and we do not go into deficit spending. So this is where we were, twenty twenty three, where we're currently at and where we want to stay. This number stays the same. Year to year, you have your certified salary. Non certified. B O Cs expenses. And you're going to see on the far side, the percentage increase. Or decrease. So contractual really scrutinized this, really gotten into the weeds, made sure that we were accurate. Equipment took some of those things from Mr. Davis. Uh, employee benefits, again, those are some of the things that we had talked about about uh still being on uh the the parents' insurance that helps us out. Non certified salary, uh we just settled that contract, and so that's all contractual as well as the certified salary, which again, all contractual. Here is more. This number right here, I'll mention. The the subs is is really a a huge cost to us right now. Each pay period, we're paying about thirty thousand dollars in subs. So when you think about that, um, that's an enormous amount of money. So really have to kind of curb and curtail that. Supplies, made sure that we kind of got that. Really under wraps tuition. We have a few more students that we are outsourcing to other districts. The interfund transfers is what we discussed. It was one hundred plus two fifty plus cafeteria. We're not just going to the capital outlay project of a hundred thousand dollars. Grand total again still is our our number twenty five four seven. We talked last time about the purchase cost of a bus, and at the end, I'll kind of talk about our resolutions and our propositions. But you know, when you think about the cost of a bus over a ten year period plus getting the aid back on it, the numbers in red are what really we're paying per year. It it's it's a no brainer. And so again, this is a separate pot of money. It has nothing to do with the actual general fund. Well, it does in the tax levy. We pay for it out of there, but it's really a separate pot of funds and the money. And you think about just the wear and tear on a typical, you know, bus. Uh, Mr. Ballard said we're spending probably, especially for some of the older ones because of some um repairs and things that need to occur about ten grand. So it's imperative that we stick with the plan that was made and that we reutilize and uh we go through our our bus rotation plan.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Carroll, what what's important to really highlight on that slide is that the. The fund or the the bucket that the money comes from, New York State for the transportation aid, not be utilized for salaries. And so sometimes um the question comes up, why are you purchasing buses and not utilizing that funding to um pay for salaries? And and unfortunately, it is very specific. We can buy the buses and then we can you get that aid specifically for the purchase of buses. It can't be used for sellers because it. It doesn't seem logical, but those are the.
No, great point. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, transportation and tax cap and what that impact would look like. So you know, this year, point two seven to the actual levy. And if we continue on the ro- um rotation plan, it actually levels out where if we keep doing this, they eventually pay for themselves. Next steps. Wait for budget adoption to see what, if any, funds we will receive. The hope is that we will. Um, and then obviously finalize staffing, have the extra money. What does that look like? What are we looking for? Do we have to hire? And then obviously showcase reductions for the twenty second. And then last but certainly not least, this is kind of the proposition that will showcase in the budget newsletter that will be going out shortly. Thank you, Mrs. Coletta, for all your hard work on that. I know that I have been dragging. Uh, I will get you all the information. Um, so here's the budget. We're looking to go out at the twenty five, four, four, seven, three, thirty eight. Again, this may change depending on our revenue. And then transportation, looking at purchasing for um. Uh, vehicles, one seventy seven passenger, one special education bus, one suburban and one um. Chevy Travers. Any questions?
I'll have some more once I see some more details and I'll come in tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Great. Thank you.
Just really want to commend um Mr. Carroll and the administrative team for the hard work they have put forth in in balancing the budget is. It's difficult when there's moving parts and you don't have all the answers. So really, really want to commend them. So really excited to share some some celebrations tonight in my board presentation. So when I'm left, John. Yep, you got it. We know we have amazing staff and our students do tremendous things, but um, you know, the first couple of slides here. We were first going to highlight Mr. Chandler uh because L C N had acknowledged him as athlete of the week. And we we thought that was a great accomplishment. Um, learned this morning, so I'm a very proud mother. Um, that he's been accepted into the Nap- at Naples Naval Academy. Um, that is a very prestigious um establishment. As you can see, only eleven out of a hundred applicants are accepted. There is a a very strenuous physical as well as academic component to um the application process. So. This is just the first of of many ways that we will celebrate this, but and I believe first uh G C S grade in thirty years is that what? Since I've been here, I don't recall. Uh, have you?
I can't bring up anyone. So congratulations.
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 Sam, I just say, you know, it it really does take a village and the application process is really intense, but. Also, um, he had to get multiple recommendations and interviews and our staff um really stepped up and really stood by Sam. So we really appreciate all what everyone did and support him. So.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Um, and then we also learned today, maybe our batteries wanted in our remote. Um, that Noah Rose will be participating in the paid summer program at the University of Rochester's Laboratory for Laser and and Genetics. Um, if you remember, uh Matt Snyder Rock went through this program and then he came back and actually um presented his research project. Which I'll be honest, um, I understood about ten percent of what he was actually studying um at that presentation, but. Um, just very excited for Noah. Again, as as Mrs. Chandler just said, it takes a village. Um, Sir Kozowski really helps connect our students to these amazing programs and congratulations to Noah, but looking forward to hearing more about his project. Um, I believe it's eight students out of the entire Rochester area are chosen for this pro- for this program. So. Again, another prestigious program, another wonderful celebration for our our students.
Well, congratulations.
Absolutely. Um, so we had, Mrs. New and I had a first grade parent meeting. And we did have that meeting on April twenty seventh. We created some action steps from that meeting. Um, one of the major components from from that meeting was um creating a task force. We really um, you know, heard from the parents that they have ideas and they want to be part of the solution. I was very excited. Um, that the parent group came in with, these are our concerns and here's how we want to help solve them. Uh, it just speaks to the amazing community that that we we live in and that has supported the the Geneseo School District. So excited to move forward with some of um the next steps as well as um problem solving with with this group of parents. And I think we had about twenty three parents um show up, so a a good turnout for that meeting. And another celebration, our playground work is to start soon. We're going to get that schedule out. Um, this is the latest rendering. The one change that is going to take place is these renderings show. Um, a solid surface underneath the playground equipment. It was either going to be turf or the poured um poured in place rubber. Um, unfortunately, from the time that we created these plans and then submitted them and then put them out to bid, the poured in place rubber and the turf doubled. And um so what we are going to do is we are going to um start with all the equipment and have engineered wood fiber, which is basically our our wood chips. In in the um for the base of the playground. However, we're still moving forward with all the drainage. And all of the um appropriate work that if in the future we were able to replace the wood fiber with either. The um synthetic turf or the poured in place rubber, we would have all the infrastructure in in the drainage to do so. Um, so excited to see that because unfortunately, day by day, more pieces of the playground do break. So we are um excited to open this up for our students. There will be some. Um, towards the end of the year, there will be some time when the playgrounds close so that we can um install the playgrounds. So there will be some some pain, um aches and pains with our with our drawing pains, but. Um, really excited to see what what we're going to have for our students um this summer and in the fall. Next week, we also start our bridge um access to the um field of dreams. So on the right, what you see is the flat bridge and there's a rendering of a wheelchair and then there's below that a person standing. And so what we've done is the architect created a sightline that even if someone was standing in that last um bleacher. That someone in a wheelchair would still be able to have clear access um sightlines to the field. And the picture on the left, the blue is new um bleachers that we're adding. So we're actually adding some additional seating to our bleachers. And then you can see um up above that is that contour where people can stand, and that's also where um we can have wheelchairs. Um, seated and then there is a chair next to each of the wheelchairs. So if they have um someone with them, they have uh a chair for their for their guests to sit. So excited to have this in place for fall sports, um improving our access for uh our our spectators. And then if you bend out back, you still see around the building a lot of mud and. And then if you've been out back, you still see around the building, a lot of mud and unfinished areas. So our site work, um really the um landscaping component of our project will start next week as well. So look forward to some new pictures on on that being completed. Safety and security, um that is a picture of me driving a bus. So um members of the safety committee, uh which is our entire administrative team, um Officer Hopper and um Bernie Hathaway, we learned to drive a bus. If in an emergency, we were unable to get bus drivers in and we needed to relocate to the armory, um we know how to do it. So um I enjoyed it. I I think I wanted to get my um SBL.
Absolutely.
So. But no, it was it was, it was a great, it was a great training. Um and it is, it is different than driving a car. You know, I know it's bigger, but there's like, there's more to it.
While you're taking your sons to the football games, you can drive them.
That's right.
Yeah, everybody else.
Okay. I'll be there. Um we also just completed our annual fire inspection and really just want to commend uh Mister Davis for all the hard work. There's, there's a lot to uh those components and each year they add more and more layers to to those um classroom restrictions, if you will. And and it's one of those things where, you know, you you still have to re- remember this as a school and like, so to remove all of our hangings on the wall and 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 not to have it decorated um is difficult. So we we make sure to communicate clearly with staff when it's happening so that we can comply. Then we also bring our school back to that friendly welcoming place um once it's done. But do want to thank uh Mister Davis for all his hard work in um meeting the requirements to get our fire inspection approved. And then um we are seeking your approval later on. We have our last day, we did make some adjustments, I don't know if you noticed, but it was a pretty mild winter. So we would like to recommend that the last day of instruction for our grades K through seven be on June twenty first. And this is different um than what would be done in the past, we are doing no half days. Um during the final week of of that last regents week, what we found is the half days have been become um a difficulty on parents to get daycare and and pieces like that. So we removed those half days and ending earlier. And then grades eight through twelve, well, their first day of instruction, for the last day of instruction is June thirteenth because they have regents from the fourteenth to the twenty fifth. And then the last day for teaching staff will be on June twenty sixth, that's a rating day. Um also, in our calendar last year, when we approved it, we said that if we didn't have any snow days, there's zero to one, that we would also be giving back Friday, the twenty fourth to LGFA staff. Um so they'll have a nice, long, four day weekend for Memorial Day weekend. And then as Regina said, um we do have our NISM All-State Solo Festival this weekend, Odyssey the Mine Steak Tournament is this weekend. And then um we will start our grades three through eight ELLA exams coming up. Any questions?
I have a question. So is there like a a waiver that covers in the event of an emergency of someone with a non specialized license to operate a bus?
I don't believe there's a waiver, I think it's one of those situations where it's, we're not gonna start subbing. Um it will truly be in in emergency, in emergency situation.
Right.
Yeah, there's not a waiver.
Correct.
But good question. Any other questions?
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had just another quick comment about the the linkages, the digital linkages. Uh I know a community member had mentioned that it is very difficult to read on a phone. Uh I personally experienced that trying to do that on my own phone for this past one, it took forever to download, just was a giant file size and some of the pertinent information was illegible, like you couldn't read it, even if you're trying to expand it. Um so I I just think going forward, you know, we did receive the communication from the community that that paper is the way to go for the the linkages, I think that we should seriously consider that.
And we are planning next year to move forward with um doing four printed copies, um which will increase the printing and um budget, the printing and mailing budget because of how our our school district um geographically is is um established. We'll still do the monthly electronic version, but we will do four printed versions a year. And I think there was a suggestion at the last board meeting is um trying to figure out if there's a way to have people opt out. Where that gets difficult is when you do that mass mailing. Because if you have people opting out, the only way to truly do that is then to start email or to mail to individual families, which would then increase the mailing cost. So everything is one of those, you know, there's it's like catch twenty two, you can try and and save and so, but still problem solving and and we'll welcome any um feedback to that process.
Yeah, I believe there was some suggestions to see if we could share mailings with some other districts as well or uh entities as well.
And I I've also received, I've received a uh community question about um student data in our publications about first and last names. That might be something we we look at as a district of whether or not we want to include students' full names along with their picture and grade and and things like that.
You know, and it it it's funny, we recently, yeah, we we recently um had that conversation um with our our PR person and, you know, it it's hard because we're celebrating an accomplishment, student of the month.
Right.
And and so what is the right? Because if we just say Suzie was student of the month, it doesn't really acknowledge who Suzie is. So it it is something that we've discussed, um it's it's on our radar for sure.
Is it in compliance with purple?
So it's, it's all called considered directory information. Um and it's it's a fine line, right? If you use first and last name and a grade level, you are identifying um that student's identifiable information. So it is, it's a very fine line. Um I have been researching the other um publications at other schools or district and they they do first and last names as well.
I know local newspapers also do this, but what they do is therapist, what what we do is
Absolutely.
Under our control. So it's just something, something to seriously think about, um especially when we do mass mailings that go to every address and considering who might be at some of those addresses. That's a concern.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other thoughts, comments? Other plans, Craig? Any relations?
Oh, any relations?
Nobody. All right, you knew that.
Thanks, I did, but I'm just, I'll say that.
Um yeah, I'll I'll keep it short. I mean, uh Scott covered most of what we've covered in uh in our uh finance committee meetings. Um we just got in a little deeper into the details of of how we, how they've arrived at at the uh the budget that, you know, that where we are now. And uh I would, you know, I would repeat Cindy's commentations that Scott and everyone has done a fabulous job of working hard at uh trying to find, find the fine line there and get down to a number that works.
All right, thank you. Kevin's not here tonight, he's actually been sworn in and role in fire chief.
We will meet next Monday as a policy committee.
GCEF, anything?
Um because we have a meeting on this Thursday, we sort of, I'll have an update for.
Okay. David to you on personnel.
Okay, under personnel, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items seven point zero two to seven point zero nine, second.
For any questions, comments on those couple of resignations? And to retire? Certainly all retirees will be missed, so now it's a Angela Weber, I think that will be significant. Comments?
Just, you know, Darlene Hunt has been a a longtime teaching assistant here and has really supported many special education programs. She's also integral in um NGHS, so she will, she will be missed. Um and then Angela Weber, she has really um filled many roles here over the years at at Geneseo. She for many, many years was our teacher of the deaf. And um now, most recently is a special education teacher, but even in her role as special education teacher um has provided teacher of the deaf services when needed. So um if you know Angela, we will miss her her enthusiasm, her um comical relief at all times. Um but most importantly, how much she cares and how hard she works for for student success.
Any comments, thoughts? Did you say? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And uh under new business, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items eight point zero two through eight point zero seven, second.
Questions, fans? All there?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And last, under business office, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items nine point zero two and nine point zero three, second.
A couple of quick comments and then certainly I want to thank everybody for all their donations, all of them of any level are are appreciated and thankful. Um clearly, uh Livingston and I care and baseball team, I guess it's greatly appreciated there. And uh Mister Mingus and his donation to the band department are, you know, extremely generous in terms of anything I've seen from from a donation. So much appreciated to all, Livingston Lanes as well for the whale watch and um some miscellaneous donations to the drama club, all of them appreciated, but just want to make a little bit of recognition, yes. Especially we received a a note about Mister Mingus's uh donation earlier this week and I thought it was just worthy of getting on, so sure, thanks for getting on the agenda. All right, vote for maiden second and any comment, additional comments? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? So moved. No?
No, exactly, exactly. So.
In case.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Any uh attraction, anybody want to say no to that? Say later? We can talk more. In that case, uh so moved. Thank you. Uh thank you, everybody. Thank you online as well.
That was a big smile and there was no. And they noticed.